Thank you so much, and I know that Adam and Carrie, I think we would echo our sentiments that our partners are huge parts of our community as well as our buildings and our schools. And so, we are very thankful for all your time and effort, and we couldn't do it without you. So, thank you so much. We welcome you aboard. Yay. The next item on our agenda then is Item B. It's on Page 2, and this is another board celebration, and this is why Waterloo schools. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Vev Smith for this portion of our agenda.
Over the past number of board meetings, we've had opportunities to hear from individuals from different employee groups regarding their choice of why Waterloo, why they decided to be, maintain their employment with the Waterloo Community School District. And tonight, we have with us the music director at Hoover Middle School, our teacher, Mr. Travis Gratu Zinnel.
Cool. Okay. Can you hear me?
You're good.
Awesome. So, as Dr. Smith pointed out, I am Travis Gratu Zinnel. I teach 6th through 8th grade vocal music at Hoover Middle School. And I was approached earlier this year by this fine woman to share why Waterloo, a story, or rather, my list of reasons why I applied, why I accepted, and why I stay here in Waterloo. I'm originally from a thriving metropolis called Humboldt, Iowa. I attended the local public school and was overly involved in music, drama, speech, mock trial, Knowledge Masters Open, and the list goes on and on. During this time, I had phenomenal music educators. That inspired me to continue at Iowa Central Community College and then on to Wortburg College. But after attending Wortburg, I learned, or sorry, rather, being from near western Iowa, I learned very little, or I knew very little about the Waterloo schools. But after attending Wortburg, I learned I needed to come to Waterloo to fulfill diversity hour requirements. We'll get back to that. My first teaching job, I taught pre-K-12 in southeast Iowa. I taught 3-year-olds to high school to 6th graders, all in one day, with some similarities and some differences. Knowing that that would not be my career school, I was thankful that my spouse, who also works for the district, moved her family up to the Cedar Valley to attend graduate school. I found a job that I loved, commuting 45 minutes to teach at South Tama County, about 45 minutes south of here. I was teaching middle school band and choir, working to implement master's research, and embracing the diversity that this little pocket of east central Iowa had. I had no intention of leaving Tama. I had planned to pursue my doctorate and to go to classes after my teaching day, then drive up here to Cedar Valley. Well, little did I know, but Mike Fisher had different plans. If you don't know, the Hoover interview process can be a very interesting one. It began with him reaching out, asking if I would interview, or apply for the position. And I heard, okay, 6th through 8th grade only choir, not a far commute. Okay, I'm interested. But you can imagine my inner struggle as I was seeking a school with diversity, genuine diversity, racial, ethnicity, gender, and all of the spectrum of diversity. And I was teaching Native American and Hispanic students primarily, attempting to champion for them, building connections to local universities like Renell College, UNI, and other institutions, trying to get students to break the molds, receive an education, and come back to help their communities thrive. Mike Fisher can be persistent. I called for what I thought would be a half an hour interview. Turns out, it was an hour or more. We nerd out over books. So, I was reading Educating Activist Allies by Katie Swalwell at Iowa State University in the Education Department and found that I wanted this job. You can imagine how stressful that was for me, keeping my application as a secret from my previous institution, but also craving to be a part of a district that has a history of diversity and attempts to desegregate their schools. I was not going to leave a district with rich diversity for another stereotypical monoculture type 1. If I were going to move closer to my home and to the area universities, I would have to make this move. I received the go-ahead for the face-to-face interview. I'm going to share how stressful that is. So, this is June 2nd, and you've got to imagine that this is a different thing than at Tama. I was already done with school. So, you can imagine, like, I was getting ready for summer lessons, and I was coming back and thinking, okay, so I'm going to teach kids in the last week of school before summer starts, and I wonder what this is going to be like. I had to teach a lesson, which is great, but then you read in the fine print, "You must perform on your instrument." Huh? What? So, I haven't performed serious music repertoire since college and actually did a recital on clarinet. So, fortunately, I had just taught my treble voices at Tama a piece called Taylor the Lot Tableau, which is a musical theater-type piece of a girl who's infatuated with this boy at Starbucks. And so, that was a really awkward solo for me to sing while teaching them the oohs, but I did it. But my students in that moment were just amazing. After being in the room and in the building, it confirmed that I needed to be here. I could feel the energy of a music team serving the same grade levels, an administration that sought to seek, or that sought social justice for their students, and a community that cares about their children's education. While upon that phone call with the offer, I learned the process of breaking contract with my previous district, the superintendent bittersweetly, yeah, that's a word, signing off that she was good with me going with remarks like, "I couldn't keep you, could I? You need to be challenged. You need to go for this." I never looked back. This was the best career change for me. This is only year 2 for me, year 6 total. I followed a teacher that had been in the district for 30 years, was a piano player, and had built a fantastic program. I looked to continue that excellent sound and increase the participation with rigor and relevance. You can imagine my struggles. Principals being in your room to do walkthroughs is not always heard of in every building or every district. And it's really eye-opening to think, oh, I'm not in trouble. Like, you're just doing your job to help me do my job better. Wow. Sorry, that's really surprising to me, so forgive the excitement. But what I wrote here was to walk through it to truly help you and not just looking for a student or a teacher's inadequacy. The number of students, I had combined 7th and 8th grade choir of 80 students at South Tama, so 70 students is my 8th grade, and my program is a bit more than that. Now, I want to tell you a bit more about my why. My schedule, that's one of my whys. Hoover implements a 10-period day schedule, which is really unheard of outside of circles here, but it has worked. I teach 320 students, which is up 30 students from last year. Monday and Thursdays are typically treble or female voices. Tuesdays and Fridays are male voices or bass voices, and Wednesdays are mixed choirs. My 10-period day supports me with seeing students in appropriate pedagogical ways with their specific struggles. I'm going to throw it back to a TV show that some of you may remember, The Brady Bunch, where Peter Brady goes through quite a voice change, and that is my day-to-day. So, changes happen all the time. Now, I have 2 periods of each grade level, time for collaboration, and 1 class of general music on a rotation basis. This year, we've implemented world drumming, which has been fantastic. This general music class is designed for students that are not in an ensemble or are in only 1 ensemble and maybe an advanced class, so their schedule works out to have it. We fulfill our legal requirement, but also I get to have students that claim to not like music, they get to hit drums, and then learn about another side of the world that they might not experience. Or in Hoover's case, I've had students live that life in Kenya or in Liberia or Libya. So, that's really, really exciting. Another why, professional growth. Before the school year ended last year and through the summer, I began a transition to the district choir coordinator. With the shifting of Sam Kressig from the music lead teacher position to a building administrator, I was happy to take on this challenge. Ultimately, I see myself potentially in some sort of administrator role or with the ability to shift practices to culturally responsive practices, enriching the education experience by looking at the whole child. Music is my current medium, and I appreciate the opportunities I have had to hold and facilitate online music PLCs and hope to do more PD as we shape the district's PD schedule. Another why, former contract and now handbook policy and provision of a teacher's sabbatical. I learned about that when I was meeting with Julia Dunn, and my ears perked up because I was like, what? I could leave for a short time and then come back? Because like, it's like, there's a morning that I'm like, not ready for in leaving the classroom or leaving the district ever. That's how much this district means. This piqued my interest because I've recently been admitted to Iowa State University's Social and Cultural Studies of Education PhD program. Pending that, the provision remains. I will look to take a semester sabbatical to ensure remaining in a given position or would find ways to allow, that allow me to fulfill those requirements and still fulfill my district responsibilities. I would really struggle leaving this district. Let me now share the ultimate reason for my why. I am here for my students, my colleagues, myself. I am here because I thoroughly love teaching vocal music in a diverse setting where I am not treated or viewed like a one-trick pony. I have colleagues in literacy that I have collaborated with to help students choose their own concert music, received an innovative learning grant from the Waterloo School Foundation, students that work really hard to not only be high-quality singers, but also music literate, and knowing that my building has my back. That last one is super crucial. I am like many other teachers, and being gone is rarely an option. So, I show up at 7:00, I prep, check the office, get things in order, text my sub, and check in relentlessly. It's my baby. Like, I'm not going to leave it high and dry. On countless occasions, my administrators and office staff remind me to go home or hit the road whenever this event may be. They have checked in about my current status, having a family member currently with medical issues, or even just a quick text message to say thank you or appreciate what I'm doing. Our program has grown over the last couple of years with an increase of about 30 students. I have been happy to serve the Waterloo schools and community. An outreach performance we have coming up is a choir and orchestra collaboration, a celebration of culture and carols in our community. This event will take students from the 7th and 8th grade vocal and orchestral ensembles, and they will get the opportunity to go to the magnificent auditorium at East High. We will perform an array of pieces leaning towards each majority, or each major holiday that takes place around this time of year with a culminating piece written for us by Jim Popolis. This piece is translated to Stand United. It has been written in Bosnian, Arabic, Hebrew, and English. This performance will take place on Saturday, December 16th, 2:00 p.m. at East High Auditorium. I continue to talk about my why, but instead, I would invite you to come to my classroom, talk to my students, come to a performance, because these are examples of learning in action. The Waterloo schools have worked to deliver a high-quality public education to all its students. I am proud to stand by this district, and in the mission of Hoover Middle School, I will continue to influence the world, serve others, and save lives. Thank you.
You're a hard act to follow, so you know what? You don't have to, you're going to get to follow yourself. How's that sound?
Cool.
So, can I ask you to stay right there? Okay, excellent. So, the next item on our agenda is another board celebration. Talk about why Waterloo, let's talk about why Opus. Yes. So, we have 2 students here this evening from Hoover, 3, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. 3 students here this evening from Hoover, and I'm going to let Travis introduce them. And, oh, excuse me, I just can't read my own agenda. So, I'd like to introduce those 3 and have them come forward and say congratulations ahead of time, so.
Sweet. So, Opus Honor Choir is an all-state event. It is the equivalent to all-state for middle school vocal music students. We had, I attempted to have students audition for this choir last year, and we had about 50 students audition for this choir, and it's a blind audition. They have to prepare 3 audition requirements. We upload those online, the powers that be select. Last year, we didn't have the luck, so I reevaluated where I approached things from, and this year, we offered an Opus Boot Camp. This was hosted at Hoover Middle School. For 4 days before school started, allowing any Waterloo district employee that's a music teacher that wants students to audition, they could come and do so. So, we had a time slot for the 5'6" choir, a time for 7'8" treble and 7'8" bass. Those teachers that assisted in this camp were Jessica Lieb at Bunker Middle School, Samantha Takis at Central Middle School, Lindsay Marks at Lou Henry Elementary, and Crystal Waltz at Irving Elementary. This year, we were fortunate enough that we had about the same number of students prepare the audition, and we were able to get out of, there were 3,000 individuals that auditioned for 720 spots. And we have students in each, 1 in each choir that we were eligible for. Elijah Bueller for the 5'6" choir, Brooklyn Smith for the 7'8" treble choir, and Philip Bosin for the 7th and 8th grade bass clef choir. They performed at Iowa State University last month as part of the Iowa All-State Festival.
Would you 3 come up to the microphone for me, please? I'm going to take Sue's role just for a minute. I'd love it if the 3 of you could tell us, just introduce yourselves. I think I know which one's which, but go ahead. And also, will you just tell us a little bit about the experience, maybe what you liked, which song selection you preferred, what it was like singing in that awesome auditorium? Could you give us just a little piece of your experience?
My name's Elijah Bueller, and it's just, when you step out on stage and with all these students that are the same age and have the same, like, talents as you do, and just getting out on stage with such a big audience, your blood starts to pump, you're just like questioning your life. And once you get on stage and you start to sing, and it just comes out, and it sounds so beautiful, and it's so smooth, all your just nervousness just goes away, and it's amazing to have that experience.
Awesome, Elijah. Thank you. Right? Brooklyn? Philip? Either one of you?
Hi. My name is Brooklyn Smith, part of the 7th and 8th treble clef choir. It was an amazing experience. It was very fun. It was such a very big auditorium, and seeing the audience and how many people were there, and knowing that they basically will see your every move, and they could hear, they could hear a mistake or something, it's very nerve-wracking.
Thank you.
My name's Philip Bosin, and the best thing about doing Opus was just the experience of going and singing with the amazing choir. It was like, even my mom said it was like the best one she's ever heard, and we've been to many choirs before.
Awesome. And Philip, you're repping that cool shirt. I like it very much, very much. So, thank you, all 3 of you, and congratulations. I know how much work and effort that put in. You had to not only memorize your music, but you had to do your performance, you know, your performance pieces, but also just your audition pieces. I know how much work that was, so thank you so much for representing Hoover and Waterloo, and we are so proud of you.
If I could say, we need to congratulate Mr. Travis Gratu Zinnel because he spent countless hours with these young people before and after school to prepare them for this music for the concert.
Here, here.
And just wondered, is there an opportunity that we can hear these young people at some place or time, or would that be a possibility?
Did you guys get the, did you get the CD that they produced?
We haven't received them.
They haven't come yet. They take a while, I think. But, okay. Maybe you could share them with us when, a copy. Yeah. Great. Thanks, you guys. Yay. Is there something else? Oh, they can do that. You're good? Thanks, you guys. So, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and I'm just curious, before I read my little piece, if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board? And if so, you may come forward. All right. Then, we will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of 4 items. Item D, which are the minutes of the November 1st and 6th, 2017 special board meeting, and the November 13th, 2017 regular board meeting. Item E, which is personnel appointments and adjustments. Item F, which is bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. And item G, which is the labor negotiations team. So, entertain a motion to get those items on the table, please.
Some move.
Thanks, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Aster. Is there, are there any items that members wish to have removed? All right, then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items D, E, F, and G, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Then, the next item on our agenda, we've got some more students in the audience, so we're going to get through this for you guys, is Item H, which is the West High Student Field Trip to the National Policy Seminar in Washington, DC. And I know that Ms. Winters is here this evening, and I'm going to get to the motion here in just a second. When I get to my, there we go. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approves the travel for West High student Caleb DeCosta and PBA advisor Devin Winters, PBA, sorry, BPA advisor Devin Winters to attend the National Policy Seminar in Washington, DC in March of 2018.
I'm also the Skills USA advisor. I must have maybe mis-typed or something, so.
That's okay. So, we'll just amend, we'll add the words.
Skills USA.
BPA and Skills USA advisor. So, I'll take a friendly amendment on that, if that's all right? Don't need to? Okay. Don't need to worry about that? All right. All right, so Sue Flynn, and then a second?
A second.
Thanks, India.
You're welcome.
And now, we'll open it up for discussion. Ms. Winters?
Once again, I'm Devin Winters, and I'm the advisor for Skills USA as well as BPA, and we happen to both be here tonight, both organizations. Caleb is one of my state officers for Skills USA as well, and so, I'm going to let him talk a little bit about what he thinks is going to go on in National Policy Seminar. He has not been yet, and he hasn't started having his meetings yet, so those will be coming up in January, so.
How are you guys doing today?
Good. How are you?
So, in March, we were, well, that's kind of obvious.
No, you're right. They'll adjust it in the back. You're fine.
In March, we were planning on going to Washington, DC for the National Policy Seminar. There, we were going to be meeting with different school organizations, and we're also going to be meeting with legislators to talk about things like Perkins. I'm sure all of you guys are familiar with Perkins is, so it's going to get fundings for our different things, like the Career Center. I'm actually very, or I actually have a class out at the Career Center right now, and what that actually does is, for skills, it's all competitions. And the competitions that are there are all skilled-based, you know, engineering, you know, all your STEM classes. So, the competition I'm going to be competing in this year is called Advanced Manufacturing. Well, actually, at the Career Center, we actually have a class called Advanced Manufacturing. So, everything I learn out there, I'm actually going to be going to state and competing against everybody else in state for this type of stuff, so that's kind of cool. Yeah.
He hasn't been yet, so.
I've also been a state officer for 2 years now, so this is my 2nd year.
So, what have you heard that you might have to do, or what will you be judged on and timed on?
Are you for, in the, during DC or during, like, when I'm competing for, like, Advanced Manufacturing?
Advanced Manufacturing.
We're going to be, we use the CNC machines, so we'll actually go down to Ames, and we'll actually work with the DMX, all of their machines and everything, and they give us a certain criteria, and we have to come up with this part or something, or I haven't quite read exactly what it is yet, but it's something sort of along the lines of that, everything that we're doing at the Career Center. So, it's.
And then, I also make them always compete in 2 events for skills, and so, one will be their skills-based, and another one will be a leadership-based. So, we'll probably do, was it customer service was one of the ones you did last year? Like, a customer service, where they have to answer questions and handle a situation or something like that. So, we always do, develop both sides of the student quo.
What are you, what are you currently working on in your Advanced Manufacturing class?
We are actually, we have a part, and then we, it's just, you have these all dimensions and everything, and then we actually have to make this part with like a tolerance of a certain measurement, so see how close we can get it. We're actually mainly still learning all the machines, because there are actually so many machines out there. You know, you learn it for a couple of weeks, and then you can move on to the next one, learn it for a couple of weeks, and then go back to the ones that you learned at the beginning, you know, and work with them. And then, we actually have a part that's coming up here that we're actually going to be using more than 1 of the machines. So, that's kind of cool, because now we know how to use more of them, more than 1 of them, so.
So, are you, are you doing this manually, or are you programming a machine?
Both. We have, let's see, 3 different CNC machines, so those are the ones that you're going to program, and then a bunch of the other ones are just manually, you know, your mills and your lasers just manually, so.
Okay. Had you, had you experienced any of that before this class?
Yes, I have. My grandpa owned a welding shop for many years, and I worked there for, ever since I've been about 5, so I've been doing this stuff for many years, so.
He's actually going to Iowa State next year for engineering, too, so he's kind of following that same pathway. And I know Mr. Plaguey thinks very, very highly of Caleb, and he's done a lot of work out there with Mr. Plaguey on the equipment and things like that, so he's good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, Caleb, you're famous. You've been in the CTE video. I've seen you before.
Yeah, they use that picture all the time.
Did a very nice job. Yes. I should have brought one, you could have signed it for me.
Yeah, there you go. I see that whenever you guys post it on your Facebook page, it's like, hey, that's me, all the time.
That's great. We appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions? Well, congratulations, and be sure to let us know how you do once you get back.
Definitely.
All right, good luck.
Thanks, guys.
All right. All right, then, all those in favor of approval of the West High Student Field Trip to the National Policy Seminar in Washington, DC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is Item I, and this is the West High Student Trip to the BPA National Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High students and Devin Winters, BPA advisor, to Dallas, Texas for the Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference, May 9th through the 13th of 2018.
Some move.
Thanks, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Awesome. And with that, we will hear from Ms. Winters and this array of fine students.
You have asked us every year to come back and present from the previous year. So, I've got 2 of the students that were here last year are Caleb and Caitlin, and they were involved last year. So, they would like to show you guys a quick little presentation. Can you guys see it behind our heads?
No.
Do you want it on this? Are you okay?
It's on the computer.
We can, we all have it on our monitors.
That's fine, then.
But as long as you guys can see where you're at.
Okay, so my name is Caitlin DeCosta, and last year, I ran for state officer, and I got elected. So, I'm the 2017, 2018 state officer for Iowa. Last year, we went to Orlando, Florida for a week. So, 13 students qualified for Nationals in Orlando, Florida on May 7th through the 14th. At the university, we learned about the college and all about the importance of the buildings, and we got to tour inside of one of the oldest buildings on the campus. I really can't remember what it was called, but it was absolutely gorgeous, and there was like a huge waterfall outside of it, and it was amazing.
Okay, so, we had opening sessions, and we got the chance to socialize with all the other state officers and all the other chapters in the state. So, everybody, all the states were there, all the states were there with all of their chapters, which is kind of cool, and it's a good time to talk to everybody else besides just, you know, your Iowa State. So, we got to talk to Alaska. We met the 3 people from Alaska that were here and down in Florida. That was really cool, and everything. Um, that was really cool, and everything, so...
So, on one of the pictures, it says the ambassador, I think it's points award for the state of Iowa. Twenty-seven people went off with torch points. And torch points, there's seven different categories. There's service, knowledge, cooperation, love, faith, and hope, leadership...
Patriotism?
Patriotism.
I can't remember the other ones.
I think that's it. But, um, so twenty-seven of us went off of that, and then, um, so like you have to get fifty points in each category. So that means like you could go out and help at the food bank, or like do the Feed My Starving Children to get points, and it would add up, and you would be able to get to Nationals. That's how I went, but Caleb went off in a, um, event that he got first in at state.
And that twenty-seven, it's really impressive when you think, I think ten of those kids are our students, or ten of those from Iowa that got their ambassador. It's the pride to work in there, really, yeah.
So, um, after finals on, one of the last days at the conference, we had the chance to go and explore Florida. Um, we got the chance to go to Universal Studios, and then four of us went to a grandparents' house, and we visited the, um, it's called Paint the Trail. It's one of the loo-, he's from Waterloo, and like from Iowa. And he went down, and he painted a bunch of pictures on the backs of people's fences. And it's just miles and miles and miles upon beautiful paintings. Um, and then the one we have there, we're all runners, so we just had to take a picture with it. And then the picture in the middle is from just one of the days at the conference when we were all dressed up. Okay, so we took an educational boat tour. On the boat tour, we went to see dolphins. We saw a couple of dolphins. Um, and then the most important thing about the boat tour was, we visited the old Fort Dad, Dade, sorry. And it was at the Emrock, or sorry, Emga Keys. And on the next page, sorry, there's just a bunch of information about Kate, Fort Dade, I'm sorry. Um, and then there's a light tire that is still on the fort, and it still works, too, today. And they use it from the, the light, oh, I'm sorry, I cannot talk. The lighthouse, and they use it at the St. Peter Bo-, St. Petersburg Coast Guard. And then there's just a bunch of pictures. Um, so the two bottom ones are from the light ceremony, and those are the torch ceremony, actually. So we get candles, and everyone that's in the state, or everyone that was at Nationals have candles. And it's just, it's a great opportunity to see how many people that like actually went to Nationals, and then, um, like how many people went off their torch points.
And then you notice the little lighted hats. We made those. That was the state officer's idea for Iowa, and we made those. Every state did a, like, fixable item that they do, if it's a light stick or if it's whatever. So they did the little things, so we all wore ears from Iowa, so you could find Iowa in that section, so it's kinda neat.
And that's what we have for our presentation.
Cool.
And they contest.
Okay, yeah. So wait, uh, how many people went off?
That's not a contest, right?
So there was a few of us that went off a contest. Like Caleb, he went for his, um, computer modeling.
Do you wanna talk about that?
And he actually used a 3D printer. I think they, I know the two guys did that.
So, um, Business Professionals of America is more, um, business-related versus, I was talking about skills, is more skill-related. Uh, so I kinda wanted to find one that was, um, more skill-related than BPA. And one of the biggest ones is called Computer Modeling. Um, what I had to do is I had a criteria of designing a mascot for a new water park that had opened, imaginary water park. Um, so I actually went on the computer in my, um, classroom and actually designed a person with a surfboard, um, and then actually printed it out and everything on the 3D printer, um, painted it and everything. And it was, what, nine inches tall, and the surfboard is about ten, surfboard is about ten inches. Um, and actually went and presented it, and actually got second in the state. So the top three actually got to go to, um, Nationals, and that's, I was one of the ones who got to go, so...
How long did it take to print it?
The surfboard, well, actually, I did it in four different pieces, because our printer can only print a five-by-five. So, but total, it took about, what, they say thirty-two hours, I think? Um, between all of the time it started to print. Yeah, so it's quite a bit of time to print for a 3D printer, but...
And then, so these are all the students, these are not all the students this year, but these are a few that were going to come tonight that are interested in going. They all competed at our regional competitions, so everybody's had some experience with the competitions. So I don't know, and we've got one person running as a state officer for this coming year. So, um, I'll kinda let them introduce themselves, and maybe say what they're thinking they're gonna compete in, and the one that's gonna run for state, just after her introduces herself.
Perfect. So this year, I'm going to be competing in interview skills, and at regionals, I got first place in that. And then, um, human resource management. And then we have to pick three contests, and we haven't decided on a third one yet, 'cause we only competed in two at regionals.
Um, again, I'm gonna be competing in commuter mo-, computer modeling, and I'll also be competing in human resource, something, yeah, something like that, so...
Okay, my name is Mariana, um, I'm Mexican, just saying. And I did accounting and human resources management. I got first place in accounting, so that's the one that I'm doing, and I have to choose another one for DM. Yes.
My name's Jacob Yerling, and at regionals, I competed in human resource management and interview skills.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Norman, and I competed in administrative support team and fundamentals of word processing.
And you are?
And I'm running for a state officer position.
Great.
Hello, my name is Carme. Um, at the regional, I competed in, um, interview skills and basic office procedures. And also, um, tried out the, what was it? The human resource management as well.
Great.
Okay, so these are just a few of our students that are interested in going to state and potentially national. So, um, you're gonna be great. You're the candidates.
Yeah, that's good. Have you guys started fundraising yet?
Um, we've been fundraising all year, so if you need a beer, please call me.
I thought you might. Yes.
We have a lot of beer sticks.
Yeah.
A lot.
A lot, okay. We have a meeting in another week, we might be hungry, you should, we could bring them back.
Okay.
Alright, great. Thank you all for coming tonight, I appreciate it, and good luck. We've got until May, so you got a little time.
Yes.
Wonderful. Alright, the next item on our agenda then is item K. I'm sorry, it's item J.
Do you need approval?
Oh, we have to vote on this. So, um, the motion's on the table. All those in favor of approving the West High Student Trip, uh, to the BPA National Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks, I got so carried away, I, you know, didn't even wanna vote on it, we were done, so, awesome. Thanks, you guys. Clearly, I can't read my monitor either, so... Um, the next item on our agenda then is item J, and this is the East High School JR OTC Field Trip to Waynesville, Missouri. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the East High School JR OTC Field Trip to Waynesville, Miss-, Missouri.
Some move.
Thanks, Sue. And a second?
A second.
Thanks, India.
You're welcome.
And I know that we have, um, Mr. Keith here this evening, right?
Hi.
Yes, hi.
I'm Lieutenant Colonel Glenn Keith. Uh, I do apologize, it was kinda last minute getting this before the board, but I'm, I'm a new guy, so, uh, learning the processes. Uh, so we got fourteen students that have been, uh, lots of early mornings at, uh, six fifteen in the morning, and lots of afternoons after school for an hour, hour and a half, practicing for this drill meet. Who will be competing against twenty other JR OTC programs throughout the whole Midwest, down in Waynesville. Um, it's the first time, I think, we've done an out-of-state competition in a few years. And, uh, it's a great opportunity for our students to, uh, witness some high caliber, uh, drill teams, because a lot of times, this particular competition, uh, usually one or two of the teams end up going to Nationals. Um, and for our, our te-, our team's putting a lot of hard work in. I would have some students here tonight, but we are actually at Lowell Elementary doing, uh, handing out Christmas gifts to families, and, uh, taking them in and stuff like that. So, uh, uh, other than that, it's a good opportunity for, for our cadets to, uh, really get out there and, uh, put forth, uh... They've been putting a lot of effort into this, and to show it to, uh, to their peers.
Well, you weren't too late. You know, you don't, you don't leave until Friday, so you're all set. You're good. You're good. Will we have an opportunity at all? Will you all be performing anywhere here locally?
Potentially, in the spring semester, uh, once West High, uh, I know they, they're getting some new CAT right there.
Yeah.
And they traditionally hold a drill competition in, uh, I believe it's in April. So, uh, and if they're, if they're, if they're not gonna host it, I, I will work with that new CAT, or maybe try to do a co-host. 'Cause I, I'm, I'm experienced with it from my previous job at UNI, so, uh, but, uh, that's, that will probably be the one time you could see our students perform.
Will you please let us know about it if you get it scheduled?
I sure will.
Because I know, well, Sue and I have come at other times, and I don't know if anybody else has, but it's really a, it's really fascinating to watch, and it's, it's really a treat, so...
Yeah, actually, we, we will have some West High students that have been taking the junior RTC at East, so they're gonna be the actual, uh, the, uh, drill commanders from West High, so...
Okay.
It's, it's a good partnership.
That's awesome.
So the judges, the judges are the drill sergeants from Fort Leonard Wood?
Yes, so they actually bring in, uh, active-duty drill sergeants from, uh, not only Fort Leonard Wood, but they also bring in some Air Force from San Antonio, some Marines from, uh, from, um, San Diego. And, uh, so they'll have all the branches. Last year, they actually had the, uh, active-duty Army, uh, drill team perform for the cadets. So it's, uh, it's a, uh, it's a pretty big, big, uh, program. So I, I think it's gonna be very eye-opening for our cadets to see some of the, uh, and they've, they've been putting a lot of work into it, and, uh, and I also wanna get them eager to continue to compete at some of these other future drill meets.
Will this be east first time?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the last time, it's like three years ago, we went to Saint, uh, Saint Paul. I think the last time we did an out-of-state competition, so, uh, it'll be a, a first for a while.
Once, once upon a time, I had an opportunity to be judged by the drill sergeant at Fort Leonard Wood.
Once upon a time.
How'd that, how'd that work out?
Were you in the front-leaning rest position most of the time?
I'm not sure he's recovered. That's his problem.
Um, of your fourteen students, how many are male or female, or, um, what's the...
Uh, off the top of my head, I'd say, I'd say at least half are female. And, uh, as a matter of fact, our last competition for our Raider team that we did in Camp Dodge, um, uh, the majority of my team, this is more adventure training, was, were my, were female cadets. So, uh, we have, uh, I mean, as far as, uh, we have a very diverse, diverse group there at East, and, uh, I'd like to see it grow. I want it to grow, and I wanna get, I wanna represent the student body as best we can.
What is the age range that you're taking? You have a lot of upperclassmen, or...
Actually, we have, uh, I'd say, uh... I'd say about fifty percent are upperclassmen, and the, and the other fifty percent are, uh, are freshmen and sophomore. So, uh, we have a lot of, and that, and that's, I mean, that's really what we're trying to do, is to get our freshmen to kinda get excited about this, so we can continue to grow this, so... But they're also the ones that, uh, we have to do the, the most training with, but, you know, like, they've been there, so that's, uh, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Alright, anything further?
Well, if you win any hardware, bring it back, so we can...
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, well, we're working towards that.
That's great, so... Alright, then all those in favor of approving the East High School JR OTC Field Trip to Waynesville, Missouri, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Good luck this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good time. Thanks. The next item on our, on our agenda then is item K. Um, this is a roofing project bid for East High, Bunker Middle, and Hoover Middle Schools. It's on page fifty. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education award the bid for the roofing project at East High, Bunker Middle, and Hoover Middle Schools as presented to Service Roofing Company of Waterloo for the price of $406,900.
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, and for a little background, all of you can take a look, um, at our exhibits here. And I know that, um, Dan Channer is here from Structure, if anybody has questions. But you can see, um, the bids, the bid sheets are here, and that is, um, the lowest of the bids. And I'm not sure if anybody has any questions for Dan, but I know he'd be willing to answer them if, if so.
When, when will this be finished, or when will it be done?
August 10th.
Not finished. When will it be implemented?
Happening.
Constructed?
When will they begin construction?
Well, yes.
Um, we haven't sat down to talk to them specifically. Hoover cannot start until after school is out in the summer.
Okay.
I would not expect any of the three of them to really start until school is out.
So do you have, you know, in roofing, uh, I know this is single ply, correct?
Correct.
So it's not quite as sensitive to weather, but...
Correct.
It's really difficult to, to install roofing during the temperature conditions that are specified typically.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's, what is the specification on when they can or can't work, and...
Well, typically, um, when you're getting down below forty degrees, you'd like it to be, if it's below forty degrees, you'd like it to be rising. So they can go into some, it, it's not freezing temperatures, but I don't perceive that that's gonna be a ca-, the case.
So are you the person that assures that they comply with the specs? Installation specs, or who's, who's, who's the person responsible for that? Because, you know, it, it's, it really is a difficult thing, because sometimes three hours a day is, is proper condition. Sometimes it's one hour, sometimes it's fifteen hours.
I observe, I follow the weather, uh, and talking to the contractors, I know when they're going to be doing the work. And obviously, we have meetings, uh, prior to, uh, they're beginning the work, and we, that's one of the things that we go over, so...
Okay, just, I think we should, as much as practical, have them follow the, the specs.
I would agree.
But it's, but it, it's tough, you know? You can't have a crew that all of a sudden works three hours a day, but...
Well, obviously, you know, we've got it bid early, so, um, hopefully, they can get it all scheduled into their calendars, and we don't have to worry about anything like that.
And it will be completed before school begins, so by August 10th, so that's plenty of time for school. Yeah, great. Okay, correct.
And is there, um, a couple of questions, Dan? Were you happy with, you know, getting three bids? Obviously, um, more went out, but...
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, secondly, I wanted to check as far as, is there any advantage to this early bidding? And, you know, cost-wise or anything, is there any savings that way, or is it, um...
I always believe there is, uh, getting the first ones out there so that you're on the schedule. You know, as other people start bidding their projects, you know, if, if somebody's got a full schedule, they won't bid on it, and so... I think it's a good thing.
Alright, thank you.
Do we typically accept the bond or not? The bid bond?
I believe in this case, we've specified that we will have one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, I appreciate that. Anything else for him? Alright. Just make sure. Alright, then all those in favor of approving the roofing project bids for East High, Bunker Middle, and Hoover Middle Schools, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item L, which is on page fifty-three. And these are some board policy changes. And the recommended motion here, this is the second reading, is that the Board approve the following policy: policy, maintenance, dissemination, and review.
Some move.
Thanks, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jesse. And discussion, I know Tara Thomas is here with our, our Director of School and Community Relations to walk us through it.
Thank you, Shanley. This is just the second reading to essentially change the language to reflect current practice and policy. So on the page fifty-four in your packet, where in the second-to-last paragraph, the change has been made, it just reflects that the School and Community Relations Department, with guidance from the Policy Review Committee, is updating our policies on a regular basis, and that we now have everything available online versus paper copies.
Great, are there any questions for Tara? Seems pretty straightforward, so... Alright, well then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving... All right, well then, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the board policy changes 2.180, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item on our agenda is item M on page 55, and this is the River Hills Consortium for SBRC Application for Special Education Administrative Costs. And the recommended motion is that the board approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee, the SBRC, in the amount of $45,310.57 for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium Program for the 2018-19 school year.
So move.
Thank you. And a second?
My second.
Thanks, India. And I'll open this up for discussion. I know Larry Martin is here this evening, if there are any questions for him or for...
Is the, is the only change the school year in the document?
Yes.
Okay.
In the, in the motion, the, it was 1718, it moved to 1819.
Yeah.
Yes.
Other than that, it's identical to...
It's identical, yes.
Okay.
We made you sit here for...
I do want to thank Tara for staying, you know, obviously, all of you as well, but for Tara to stay.
We made you stay for the entire hour.
They get paid to stay, right?
Exactly, so.
How does it, how does this compare to last year?
From a cost perspective, student-wise, it's similar. Our numbers at River Hills has been decreasing over the past years. We continue to support more students within the Waterloo schools. Currently, we have eight elementary students, eight middle school students, and 14 high school students.
At one time, if I remember right, I believe we had over 50 kids at River Hills, and so...
Kind of when I started in my position, we had over 60.
Yeah, okay, so I...
In the, in the total number at River Hills, what's the trend line on that, man?
Uh, it's been just over 100 for the last three years.
So, our percentage is decreasing?
Decreasing, yes.
But I think at one time, there were 100 and, their, their number's gone down, obviously, because we had the bulk of the...
Their numbers went down, kind of with ours. I'd, I'd say the other districts have remained similar.
Very much so.
Our, our number has decreased.
Right, so, at one time, I believe there were 130-some kids there, which makes sense, because we've decreased by 20, 30 kids, so I think 120 to 130, but it has also been going down trend-wise, so.
And, and why have we decreased?
We're increasing, supporting the number of students in our schools.
In our district.
So, I, like I said, it's IP team decisions in regards to what needs can be met. And it's my vision that we can meet most needs in our Waterloo schools. So, we put supports in place to do that.
So, give me an example of what, what needs that were, in the past, would have been covered by River Hills and now...
There's, I mean, most of the students that are, that currently Waterloo sends have significant behavior and health needs. Previous students, they may have had some cognitive needs, but not necessarily the health and the behavior needs. And we can definitely meet those needs here in Waterloo.
Okay, thank you.
Are we hoping in the future to have, cut this number in half as far as 30, or maybe down to 10?
I, I would feel comfortable somewhere around the 12 to 15 range, one kid per grade.
Okay.
I would, you know, obviously, you know, we're going to meet the needs of kids, and if, if that's the support we need, we'll reach out to the consortium. But I have, like I said, my majority, the 14 high school students, like I said, once I get that, I have, you know, one second grader, you know, a group of fourth graders, you know, so get us through about another six years and we'll be down in the teens.
Okay.
It seems like there'd be a trade-off between a so-called specialty school and the things that they can provide...
Yeah, there's, I mean...
To meet the needs of the kids as opposed to the environment on our side that may be more normal.
So, I mean, like I said, it is individual decisions. A lot of the students that attend River Hills have a lot of equipment needs, and there's a lot of sharing that goes on between, you know, some of the stuff that Waterloo owns, you know, other students may use the next year, just because, you know, we're in, they're in the same physical space. From a cost perspective of number of staff, which kind of boils down to, you know, from the budget perspective, the costs at River Hills are higher than per people cost for students in Waterloo.
How many staff do you have at, in River Hills?
It's, it's not my staff, so I don't, I don't know.
So, we do actually, when, at one point in time, it was run by, at that time, it was AEA 267, but now, it actually, that's transferred to Central Rivers, the, the name has changed. But the law, I don't think the law changed, but the interpretation changed, so that the AEA's, the regions could not operate, own and operate a school. So, they have to be operated by the, the, the school district in which the property resides. So, in this case, River Hills is actually, it, it's on Cedar Falls, they serve as the fiscal agent, but we have a consortium. So, all of these districts, we get together for board meetings and we, we go, and either Larry or I are there, and we actually do vote on different things. They propose things if there's renovations. So, it's actually much like this board would make decisions about the operation of Waterloo schools. The, every superintendent or designee would, would have a vote when we come together for our River Hills Consortium meeting. So, and there are other examples of that, Bremwood in, in Waverly is, the fiscal agent is Waverly Schools, because that's where it's located. But then, we do actually go and we're voting members of that consortium, so we're making decisions together. So, that's how it goes.
And, and the SBRC cost, typically administrative costs, it cannot be a special education cost...
Right.
Except in special cases. And, and the consortium, special schools is one of those situations.
Yes, yep. Yeah, the SBRC is familiar with that and has, and okay's that, so.
So, so financially, then, we end up with more authority by going through River Hills because of that?
Um, technically, yes, because if we are operating a school here, typically, if we have a, if we have a program that would be similar to River Hills, and we, we operate that through one of our school, school buildings, we can't, right, we cannot go back for the authority on that to SBRC. There are only certain circumstances in River Hills and Bremwood would be too, because it's a, considered a special school that is, yeah, so you do, correct? You get the administrative cost back on authority?
Okay, thanks.
Yep, that's true.
All right, anything further for Mr. Martin this evening? All right, and seeing none, all those in favor of approving the River Hills Consortium SBRC Application for Special Education Administrative Costs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you, appreciate it. Well, that concludes our action items on the agenda this evening, so I'll move on then to our superintendent's report with Dr. Lindeman.
Yeah, thank you. And I actually only, I'm just going to talk about one topic tonight, because I have just a little bit more to say about it. So, this week, we, or actually, last week, we kicked off our handbook, our employee handbook focus groups. And we actually have seven of them, and so we have a variety, Dr. McNulty is leading some, Dr. Smith is leading some, I am leading some, and we have a variety of people who are helping to facilitate. And so, the, the different focus groups that we have are actually handbook committee focus groups. And, so I'm actually going to tell you, just read them off, but we have the leaves of absence, so that group is looking at all the different kinds of leaves that are available to our employees, and really making recommendations to me as the superintendent of things that would be helpful for employees, but also would, would not be detrimental in any way to our students. Benefits and compensation is the second one, insurance, employee insurance, calendar, hours, transfer, and, and the policies on that procedures. And then evaluation, and evaluation was the last one, it kicked off tonight. So, we've had one meeting under our belt for all of these. And we, actually, we have several groups meeting again tomorrow night for their first, their second time, and then some more on Wednesday that are meeting for their second time. So, I just, I guess I, the only reason I wanted to bring this up, and hopefully for our viewers, I think this is really helpful to know, when, when Chapter 20 changed, a lot of these things were, that were previously in the contract, in, in our bargain contracts, ended up being excluded, that you couldn't bargain them, or some of them were permissive. We, we have most of, well, we have all of those that are in our employee handbook. We have groups that are, are working through the topic and through those different topics and making recommendations. Their job, their job, is to recommend ideas that could or should be considered for future employee handbooks. And so, I think that, and I would open it up too, if, if Dr. McNulty or Dr. Smith have anything to add to this, I would say that they are going extremely well. The, the dialogue, even just in our first evening for each of those, has been very, very, I, I don't know, I guess it's just been very positive, the, the conversation. I think that the ideas that were, were generated were, were out-of-the-box thinking, just very, very good dialogue, collegial spirit, collaborative spirit that is, has happened at those. So, I, I just, I'm really proud of that. And one of the things that I've said to each of the groups, I actually created a video that we showed at the beginning of each one, because I couldn't physically get to each of the meetings, because some of them launched at the same time. And in the video, one of the things that I talked about is the fact that this is intended to be an opportunity for everybody to give input. What I would say is, all across the state of Iowa, that there are many districts that are not doing focus groups to hear from all of their employees. We have invited every single employee, 1,600 employees were invited. And we, we had many, many, many people take us up on that. And so, some of the groups are, you know, have 20 to, you know, 20 people, some of them have maybe 14. But we really are getting some good feedback. One of the things that is really important at the end, after we make some recommendations, we will be surveying our whole entire staff to get additional input. So, I think it's actually all, it's, it's even more comprehensive than, you know, what, what we have done in the past. And so, this is just really a good thing. So, I'm very, very proud of the process that we're working, and I, I really think the people who are leading some of these will let you know how they continue to go. I think the second round is where we start doing what I call a deeper dive into some of the, some of the areas and saying, what would be the positives of, of including that in employee handbook? What would be the considerations that we need to think about? So, I, I just think that's a really good thing, and I, I thank our staff for, you know, that's donation of time, they're not getting paid to serve on these committees, and we, we really appreciate their, their input, so that's something I want to bring.
So, all, all the bargaining units are represented?
They are, every bargaining unit, but this is not a bargaining, so really, what we're saying, instead of bargaining units, although I would say, yes, that is true, really, we're looking for employee groups. So, the committees have paras, they have food service workers, they have custodial, they have maintenance, they have teaching staff, we have administrative staff, we have admin support staff on all of the committees. So, and, and there's a variety of numbers, I mean, some, we, we actually just started evaluation and the, we only, from the custodial maintenance employee group, there's actually only one person. So, we said, boy, he's really, he's speaking for a lot of people. But one thing we shared with him is, he shouldn't be, he might be the one to bring ideas to the table, but we will give him an opportunity to take information back to his group and ask the question. So, so yes, every single group is, is represented on these focus groups.
So, i, is it a goal to standardize?
Interesting, yeah, actually, in some way, yes. For example, some of, like, this is just a real-life example that just happened tonight. When we looked at the different, hello? That's all right.
Don't fall asleep.
No, on some of the, some of the policies, we noticed, like, certain ones, the evaluation is due on a certain date, and on another group, it's due on a certain date. So, that would be a really easy thing to standardize. I mean, there's no reason that we don't have that. Now, there are other things, for example, we, for, for the teaching, staying with the employee, or the evaluation, for the teaching staff, there is a, a part of the regulation that says that teachers must have notice within, by September 15th, of what the evaluation policy is, the, the evaluation tool, and that they are on cycle for that. There might be another group, if there's, if there's some turnover, let's say that we add a para in November, then if we don't, if we don't have a little bit slightly different procedure for them, that might be a little bit different. So, some of them may have to stay unique to the employee group, but wherever we can standardize, we will be standardizing. So, it, it's been really good dialogue. If, if, I mean, if we didn't do anything else, which it will be very positive in the end, but the, the one thing that's been very, I hope, I opening is to have the different employee groups see what other employee groups have in their contracts or had in their contracts. That has happened, hasn't it, Bev, where some people said, I didn't actually know that food service workers had that in their contract? I didn't know that teachers had that in their contracts or handbooks before or now. So, I think it's been really positive, I'm really excited that we're doing it. And I'm going to ask, is there anything else you would say with Dr. McNulty with yours? You're leading calendar and...
Calendar at this point.
Calendar is his, so, and he's on other ones, but yes.
And which, which seems to take up some time.
It does, yeah.
But we've had some robust conversations, and I would, I would agree with Dr. Lindeman. I think what's been helpful is that people are kind of getting a sense of the process that's been in the past and the what opportunities we have for change now.
Right.
And I, I thought it was a, a great conversation and right to the point.
Right, very good. Dr. Smith, any insight?
Not real, I believe that having all of the employee groups represented gives everyone the feeling that we're all in this together. And as we look specifically, and I'm, I'm working with leaves, evaluation, and transfer policies, and as we look at some of the districts, of some of the differences, we start questioning, well, why does that have to be different? And in some instances, whether there are hourly 12-month employees, they're saying, well, the shoe doesn't fit everyone, so that's fine, there's some areas where we should have differences, but I, I think it gives everyone an opportunity to feel like they're a part of the whole, right?
Are you hoping this dialogue, oops.
Are you hoping this dialogue will be, like, every two years, every five years? I mean, I know this is the first year you're doing this, but, you know...
Yeah, actually, we will, we are going to do it annually.
Okay.
We really are, we, matter of fact, I'll, I'll make sure I send you the opening video, it's just like two and a half minutes long. But one of the things that I said in there is that if there's something that we change this year and it doesn't work out or play out, then we'll, we'll, we'll look at that language for the next year. On the other side of that, the flip side of that, there are things that we won't be able to tackle in one year. We can't fix everything, we just can't do everything, we might not be able to cost everything out in one year. So, there are things, we've talked about, short-term and long-term changes. Some of the short-term things are actually, we might, you know, you've heard the phrase low-hanging fruit, we may grab at some of that low-hanging fruit right away this year, get it changed for the, for the 18, 19 handbook. There are other things we are already seeing as groups, we look at them, we say, oh my gosh, that is, that's a beast, that is going to be a bigger thing, that might take us two or three years to get enough foundational understanding, be able to, to be able to do that. So, yeah, but we're going to look at it every year, and not only look at things, can we go a little bit further in phasing in something, or is there something else now that we want to tackle now that we've got that under our belt? So, we're going to do it annually.
Jane, I was just wondering, is there a list anywhere, like on the website, or that you can see who the representatives are amongst the different districts? So, maybe somebody in your building, you could...
Yeah.
Oh, I have an idea to give to them?
Yeah, we certainly could do that. We have not done that yet, but we certainly could, because one of the things at the very end, I'm, I'm actually using a little cheat sheet here, but one of the things at the very end of the presentation, we said, because this is not negotiations, because we are not bargaining, during bargaining and negotiations, there are some legal requirements to keep silent and to be confidential, other than the opening exchange, everything after that time becomes confidential. This is not bargaining. And so, we tell people, matter of fact, we say, one of the, one of your tasks is to ask others, to share what we talked about. I know tonight in the meeting, we had some really good notes that were written up on the board, and we encouraged every single member around the table to step up and take a picture of it, so that they could reference it back in their buildings. That's kind of unlike things that we've done before, extremely transparent, take a picture of this, send it to somebody else, ask them what they think about this, bring your ideas back. If you have somebody else who wanted to be on the committee and forgot to sign up, bring them along. This is, this is inclusive, and it's really meant to be a transparent dialogue. So, I think that's a little bit of trend-setting, I really do. I mean, I'm very excited about the, the dialogue, and it's, I'm really, I'm probably most excited about the ideas that are being generated. A lot of them, maybe I had thought about before, but maybe didn't think that it would sell, or it would, you know, connect with people or resonate with them. And that has not been the case. Some of the things that I thought, well, they're, you know, one particular employee group will never want that, sometimes that's the employee group who brought it up. So, I'm, I'm actually really, really pleased about the conversation. At each of my, I'm leading three of them, at each of them, I asked the question at the end, how did this feel? And the responses have been, you know, from, this is exciting, or I didn't even know that this happened, or I can't wait to go back and ask my seventh-grade team what they think about this. So there's a lot of energy in the room, there's a lot of good dialogue. I think it's a really good thing, and I would actually encourage other districts to do it. Just because it, we're all in this together. This is not intended to be, it was never intended to be top-down. And I don't think it's best when it's top-down. We need to hear from people, because we're all in this together. If I could, you know, superintendent could never do this on her own. We have too many kids and too many, I can't do it on my own. So the fact that we're all around the table talking about what's best for employees is a good thing.
I think what you're, if I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, you're saying there's no preconceived notion of what the policy really ought to be. It's truly being formulated by all the interest groups.
Right, that's exactly right. And when we do the, each of the, we kind of have the same template that we've rolled out at each of them using the same kind of PowerPoint presentation, but some of the slides are different. And in one section of our first meeting agenda, we talked about, the first slide is, here are all the things that are in the contracts. These are all things that should be on the table for discussion. They're already in an employee handbook, maybe they were in previous contracts. But then we have the next slide that says, other potential topics. What are things that haven't been in a contract, haven't been in an employee handbook, that maybe should be thought about? What should we be thinking about? And so, for example, we don't have some particular things in evaluation. Some of them are not written down like we want them to be. And so some of those were brought up right away. A couple of the people said, why is that not written in there? That's really important. And so we said, well, this is our chance to get that in there. So really, whether it's in a previous contract, a previous handbook, or whether it should just be talked about. Some of the things that are in the other potential topics, I am, I believe some of those actually will become part of our employee handbook. I believe some of those other ones, we will talk about and say, oh, there's probably a reason it wasn't included because it's too, it's too all-encompassing, or maybe it just doesn't make sense, or we're not going to be able to figure out how, way to get those in there. We did actually talk with them, I made it very clear at the very beginning, because I didn't want to mislead anybody. We talked about the fact that just because a recommendation comes out of a particular group does not mean it will be handbook. It can't be, because we have other things. As a matter of fact, I'm looking at my list, and we said, further review will undoubtedly be needed because we need to cost out the implementation. We need to look at level of support by staff. I said tonight to the group, I said, we could have fifteen people around the table think this is the best idea, and we're the only fifteen in the district who like it. I mean, that's possible, it's not plausible, but it's possible. Ease of implementation will be considered when we decide which of these to come. We may, we may have to prioritize, we've got seven groups working. If one group says, this is amazing, and another group says, no, this is more amazing, then we're going to need to decide. If we can't do them both at the same time, we're going to have dialogue to come. So ability to phase in is another consideration that will come. So it's good work, it's really good work.
So once it's in employee handbook...
Reviewed annually.
It's legal policy, or...
Yeah, I mean, it is what we, it is what we follow. It is our, it's our protocol for how we operate. So can it be changed down the road? Absolutely, but that is what we follow. So if it's in the, if it's in the handbook, it is, it is the procedure and the protocol that we follow within our district.
And those are board-approved handbooks or administration?
These are, these are administration-approved handbooks. And so I think if I had to speak for maybe, you know, when the, when the Chapter Twenty changes came, there were rightfully many, many concerns from various, you know, negotiating or bargaining units saying, this is an administrative, you know, we could, you could just use one fill swoop of your pen and boom, it's done. And that is not the stance we have taken at all. Matter of fact, we've actually opened it up even more broad than it was before. So I could see why somebody could think that, because there may be a district in Iowa, I don't know of any, but there may be a district where the administrator said, okay, in the closed, you know, behind closed doors, I'm going to create the handbook and I will just let you know what it is. That is not the way we are doing business in Waterloo, and I'm very proud of the fact that we are all coming around the table to do that.
I think, I'm a hundred percent support, I think that's the correct direction. You're going to end up with the best policies for everybody.
And then the only thing I will reiterate again is, there may be more great ideas than what we can do in one year. So I've been, I've tried to be transparent about that, because we may have ten great things or twenty really great things, and maybe we can do seven of them this year, or four of them this year, depending on costing and level of support and ease of implementation. We can't do everything, but we can continually take steps. And that's the, that's the concept behind reviewing it annually. So, you know, it's just continuing to get a, to have Waterloo... Bev always says that before she retired, she wanted Waterloo to be named as one of the best places to work. This is a step to get there. We can't do things that are contrary to what our kids need and deserve, but we can take steps whenever possible. And, you know, if we have some flexibility on costing something, then we ought to have some staff input on that. So we won't be able to do all of them. I think there will be more good ideas than what we can implement, certainly within one year. But we're going to keep rolling that forward. And Tara was on one of the committees too. Are you on one or more? Just one, she's on one, she's on, yeah. So, and we have a lot of our administrators on one, we have a lot of our teachers, so it's great.
Thank you, Jane. Any more questions for Jane? Shenley had to get to a concert tonight, so, has a senior in high school, so I don't want to miss that. Let's have information from board members. We'll start with you, Lyle, on that side, if you have any.
Nope, nothing else.
Esther?
Thanks, Sue. On, at the board meeting on November thirteenth, Tom Youska presented to the board about the group going to Washington DC, the East High and West High students. And I asked a question, had they ever attended or visited the White House or the Pentagon as a tour? And I sent Tom an email this morning, and he actually said that he was thinking about me, reaching out to me. We have secured for them to visit the Pentagon on a full tour, and I think it'll be absolutely amazing. My family had the opportunity to take the tour in two thousand and fifteen from an actual East High alum, a ninety-four graduate, started, attended at West High freshman year and transferred to East, who's currently working in the Pentagon. And it's about a two, between a two and three-hour tour. You get to see everything. I mean, it's absolutely amazing. Yeah, yeah, I want to go back. I mean, I'm, it might be in my plans also, but I did contact him this morning. We're just working out the date and time that they'll do it, but we have secured that they'll get the tour of the Pentagon, so I thought that was awesome.
That is very good, yes. Thanks for getting that done, that's awesome. Those students will have an extra perk, so hopefully it will be going forward also.
Yes, yes, hopefully we can keep it going each year.
Rhonda, anything tonight? Thank you. India?
Nothing tonight.
And Jesse?
Well, I didn't have a whole lot, but got the battle Waterloo this weekend. So get out and see. Hopefully we get around to some of our teams, we'll strengthen up, they'll be more competitive some future years, but there'll be a lot of competition there. And second night's always, you know, second day's always good for teams who are with their like-level teams, so...
And for people that don't know, viewers, that's wrestling, the Battle of Waterloo is wrestling, just in case, so...
Maybe somebody wouldn't know that.
Maybe. Didn't want you to think at, yeah, at the young arena, right, correct? Young arena, Friday and Saturday this weekend. So I think there's still in need of some volunteers. So if you have some time slots open, I'm sure they would appreciate that, so... And I just wanted to mention the East-West basketball game. It was a good showing by both schools and good games. And congratulations to our fifty-point scorer. And that's an awesome night for that young man. And otherwise, I think we...
I got one more?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, I forgot.
Cut me.
I'm sorry. I forgot about this one, and I shouldn't have, but I've been traveling a lot. But last week, Hoover had a band had a parents' night. So parents got to, had to learn their instrument from their child. Tara was there with me. And we got assembled up in front to perform our fifteen minutes, fifteen seconds of fame, maybe. I'm not sure how good we sounded, but it was a good event, I think it was really neat, so...
Did you record that and put on?
Facebook policy, Tara.
Yeah, with that.
Anyway, I just want, I thought the staff did a great job, it was a wonderful evening, you know, that was something new I hadn't seen yet, so hats off to them.
Well, we'll look for that video of Tara playing also. But anyhow, we, another sign that our district is just on fire with lots of different things going on, and we don't slow down with music, athletics, whatever. So just a reminder that we do have another board meeting next week, December eighteenth at six o'clock. That's in lieu of, then we will have a break from December twenty-second to January second for the holiday break. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Summum.
I'll second.
Thank you, moved and seconded, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Oh, wait a minute, that was good.
Yeah, where's your live Facebook? Are you doing that, Tara?
She's...
What instrument does she play? Oh, that's...